Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everything's okay. Okay, I'm going to call the November 29th Select Board meeting to order. We're going to take things a little differently this evening. We're gonna do the recognition of Chief Pittman, and then we're gonna hold the meeting and go to the County Commissioners' meeting, and then come back to the Select Board meeting, a little off off track, and our chair is arriving, so I'm gonna have her settle in. Well, so do you want to start with announcements?
Yeah, thank you. So while that's happening, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. We do have an an announcement not quite on the agenda that the Fire Chief is going to give, Chief, if you would please, and then we'll go to the next item.
Thank you. So the 34th Annual Firefighter of the Year Award Ceremony took place at Mechanics Hall in Worcester, Mass. On November 21st, last week. The event is an annual event that recognizes firefighters who have gone above and beyond the call of duty to save a life. The awards are not limited to fires. Many recipients are recognized for heroic actions during water emergencies, traffic accidents, and other life-threatening emergencies. This year, the firefighters of the Nantucket Fire Department were recognized for their heroic and brave actions on the morning of July 9th, 2022, when the historic Veranda House caught fire in the downtown district of the island. Captain Nate Barber, who was off duty and having coffee nearby that morning, saw the smoke and immediately jumped into action. He entered the burning structure through a window on the second floor, and despite having no protective gear, helped to lead several civilians to safety. Once back outside, he worked with the responding members of the fire department to contain the inferno to the original three fire buildings. Approximately thirty firefighters from Nantucket battled the blaze for nearly three hours before mutual aid fire departments arrived to assist the Nantucket Fire Department. Several firefighters retreated at the Nantucket Cottage Hospital for exhaustion, but no civilian injuries or loss of life occurred. This is no doubt because of the swift and determined actions of the Nantucket firefighters. The following members of the Nantucket Fire Department received the citation for meritorious conduct. Deputy Chief Sean Mitchell, Deputy Chief Robert Bates, Captain Nate Barber, Captain Francis Hanlon, Captain Charles Keimer, Captain Kevin Ramos, Captain Joseph Townsend, Captain Jeffrey Allen, Call Captain Earl Eldridge, Firefighter Dave Angelostro, Firefighter Beau Barber, Firefighter Germano Chadi, Firefighter Ethan Phi, Firefighter Michael Finnegan, Firefighter Christopher Gould, Firefighter Christopher Holland, Firefighter Scott Holmes, Firefighter Alana Macy, Firefighter Mac McGrath, Firefighter David Bukarchik, Firefighter Shane Perry, Firefighter Corey Ray, Firefighter Evo Baichew, Firefighter Mario Cameron, Firefighter Alex Ruzendis, Call Firefighter Mac Davis, Firefighter Sean Monaco. Additionally, Captain Nate Barber was awarded the Medal of Valor by Governor Maura Healy for his heroic actions that morning. The Nantucket Fire Department thanks the community of Nantucket and the Commonwealth for the support and recognition. The Nantucket Fire Department is proud to protect and serve this island and will always strive to deliver the best level of protection to its residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chief. Okay, now our next item is recognition of retiring Police Chief William Pittman with nineteen years of service with the town. So I think the way we're gonna do this is anybody from up here might make a little comment or statement, and then we had some indication, Madam Chair, before you came in, that audience members might want to say something, so that can happen, and then, Chief, we're gonna ask you to come up, and we'll come out here and present you with a little something. So I just want to say, first off, thank you for your service to the town, and it's been very enjoyable to work with you for the past nineteen years. I have, I can, I have always been able to count on Bill for advice with difficult situations, and if we have a policy or procedure or something like that that we're considering, he has had really invaluable input into it. Sometimes it's quite clear that it wasn't thought through, and so he points out all the holes in it, but that's been very valuable because we've been able to fix it and have successful things happen as a result of that. I've learned some really good Midwestern words and phrases that I work into daily speech, and your legacy will live on for sure, and your leadership has been very, very valued, so I just really want to thank you for that, and you said I could continue to email you and contact you with advice, so I will continue to do that. I don't know if anybody else would like to say anything.
I'm sure. I would like to say thank you for your many years of service. You've been here the whole time that I've been here, and much longer, and the time that we worked together during COVID was absolutely invaluable. Your leadership skills during that difficult period of leading the community through that was amazing, and you've been a great leader for this police force and this town.
I just wanted to say more about the COVID, and then I know Amy wants to say something. That was rough, and we, the chief, myself, and a couple of other people, the Health Director and the Emergency Management Coordinator, were up in the training room for weeks together, just us, and they did move me into a closet after a while, but I won't hold that against you. And we spent just a lot of time trying to interpret, like, we had a daily news conference with the, what, watched, made sure to watch the daily news conference with the governor, tried to interpret what he said and what all the state regulations were, and lots of discussions with the Chair, and it was really quite something, but without you, Bill, it would have been really awful, so thank you.
I just want to remark on your calm demeanor. Your, just, just your presence in crisis every day is the thing that I have noted most about you, is there's an equanimity and a balance about you that is so important to the role you've played, both at the department and in the community as a whole, and I'm grateful I never had to deal with you as a customer of the Police Department. But just thank you very much, and I really just wish you all the best in just doing all the things that have been on your list, waiting for this day. So, and to your family for being there by your side, supporting you while you served us. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy Baxter. I wanted to speak, first of all, I was told not to cry, and as Chief knows, I tend to go my own way, so that's probably gonna happen. I want to speak as what's known as a civilian employee of the Police Department. We had a wonderful retirement party last night and talked about the police side, but I wanted to kind of give my perspective quickly, if I, if I may. I still, nine years in, don't really know how I ended up in the Police Department. I remember a phone call, "Hi, Amy, it's Bill Pittman," and that's the last thing I remember. It certainly wasn't something I ever expected to kind of come into, but here I am, and what I need to say about, first of all, working for Chief Pittman and law enforcement in general has been, quite honestly, the great honor of my career. And I've done the Olympics, Super Bowls, Academy Awards. There's an event, I've probably been at it, and you might think that's what I'm gonna look back at, but it's really not. It's the fact that, see, you told me not to, I'm going to. The environment that Chief Pittman created for us, and I got to see him every day as I'm upstairs near his office there. It was such a safe and respectful environment, and Lord knows, I didn't always have that. I went to work terrified before in my life and wondering, you know, what was gonna come down on me, and the fact that I found a Police Department to be my safe place is, is, I'm sorry, I did not expect, it's remarkable. They are an incredible group of people. The one frustration I have with them and Chief Pittman is they don't talk about what they do. Even a lot of officers don't know the amount of effort Chief Pittman put into things. We're both night owls. We're not early birds, so we're up there late, and I see what he's putting himself into, stuff he could have delegated into policy, into things. He navigated this department through unprecedented and incredible growth on this island. Every business I deal with, just like the department, has to add layers upon layers on their business that no one else has to. They work without mutual aid, which with the Fire Department and Police Department is an incredible handicap that they have to overcome, and one of the reasons I'm there too, hopefully, is to help with the amount of things put on them with the liquor licenses, the events, and things of that sort. He had to quietly navigate this department through that, and I don't think anyone, let me tell you, I knew nothing about law enforcement before I came into this, and you have absolutely no idea what they go through every day. They just do the job. They don't talk about it. They don't, well, they complain internally, but they don't, you don't hear about it, right? They'll just say to me, "You know what?" I'll say, "How can you do this? You know what? We just got to get it done. We just got to get it done." They have to tell people they know that someone has died, or that they're on their worst day, or there's been an accident, or there's been an overdose, or every single day, they're meeting people at their worst moment. Every single day. They're risking their emotional, mental, and physical lives for this job and this community that they live in. So to say it's been an honor to be part of this, to be trusted, to be among all of you, I'll never be able to thank you enough for that. I will take this job and this experience over all the glory and glamour I might have used to have. I'll take first responders over fund managers every single day. You know, I think, let me, hold on, I actually have notes here, but I just have to say that, okay, yeah, I did hit all the points. You are just, have been a great mentor. You've always, you let me be who I was, which is a bit nuts and crazy sometimes, and with a gentle, he has a way of just gently guiding you into the path you need to do. Whenever we had any sort of tough discussions with businesses or folks in the community, I'm kind of in there wanting to launch because I'm mad at something, and he's calmly over there guiding it and kind of getting us to where we need to be, and and a lot of the officers are like that. They know how to de-escalate a situation, and it's an amazing thing to watch because I always want to get mad, and they are just wonderful at that. So I thank you for that, for, you know, I never could get up and speak in a crowd before. You've let me kind of do things that I never thought I could do before, and it's, you're very quiet about it, and again, I don't think even half the officers understand what you did in guiding them, how much you stood up for them. You helped me find my voice and stand up for myself, and we'll never be able to forget that. And lastly, the other beautiful thing about you is how much you love your family, and I think as a community, we need to thank the entire Pittman family because it was very difficult to come here from the Midwest. We're not talking Newton or Wellesley. We're talking literally a flyover state. They come here, Nancy, and Will, and Catherine each made their own incredible impact on this community, all in a life-saving capacity too as well, and they really made this their home and part of the community, and that's so hard to do, and so hard to find, so I think we need to thank the entire Pittman family because the island's a better place for them having been here. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. I just want to say thanks to Bill for probably one of the most serious catastrophic incidents we had back in January 2018 with the forced main failure. He was there the whole time, as was administration, but Bill was able to get us National Guard to come in, Black Hawk helicopters and everything else, to emergency management, and that was amazing, as was his staff and everyone else, but I just wanted to thank you specifically for that incident. That was, and it's been great working with you all these years.
I just wanted to thank Bill, Chief Pittman. My short time here, I know you've been incredibly busy running the Police Department, but you managed to find the time to welcome me and to sort of take me under your wing and be a mentor for me, and and probably most importantly, you've just been a really good friend, and so I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing you on more personal, you know, endeavors. Thank you.
I didn't plan to speak, but my name's Arthur Gasparo, and I had the pleasure of working with Chief Pittman for all nineteen years on traffic safety once a month, and his leadership and attendance and input was really valuable, and I just personally appreciated it and really think his service to our community was exemplary. Thank you.
Well, I do get a chance for rebuttal, don't I, on some of that? I mean, I have to, I want to thank those who recognized my family because they have, you know, put a lot into this, and my daughter couldn't be here. There we go. She told me, "Don't do that." My daughter couldn't be here because she's off the coast of Haiti somewhere, protect, protecting us. And, but also want to thank Libby because one thing's an absolute fact. I wouldn't be here today had she not made the decision nineteen years ago to take a chance on me and when I applied for the job, and there was a lot of good candidates that applied. And it's a tough process. It was a fair process, and I left the island saying, "Too bad, I will never see it again," only to be called up when I got home, said, "Hey, we'd like to offer you the job." And we thought hard about it because it is a tough decision coming to Nantucket, you know, and it's a community that we really didn't know that well, but just a short time we were here, we said, "Boy, that's a community we'd like to raise our kids." And sure enough, we raised two good kids. The community helped us. The community's been supportive. We've done a lot in this department. We've brought it a long ways, and what I'm absolutely confident of today is that it doesn't need to be rebuilt. It just needs leadership to continue the trajectory that it's on, and I'm very confident that Chief Casper will do that. I've met with her extensively now, and we think a lot alike. We do a lot of things alike, and, but she's definitely her own type of leader, and I think the men and women of this department will embrace her and continue to move forward for the benefit of the town in Nantucket. And I want to thank the Select Boards that I've had over the years. I cannot honestly say that they've overwhelmingly been supportive of our efforts because what we've done has not been cheap and it's not been easy, but it always required support from the Select Boards and from town administration, and we always had that support when we needed it. So thank you very much.
All right, we're going to take a brief recess from the Select Board meeting and convene the County Commissioners' meeting at this time.
Good evening, everyone. The November 29th County Commissioners' meeting is now open. Just as with the previous meeting or the present ongoing meeting, this meeting is being visually and audibly recorded. Is there any comments from the public on any issue not on the agenda? I don't see one or hear anyone. We have next the approval for the minutes of September 27th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Further discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. We have no Treasury warrants, I believe. We do. We do.
Not pending contracts, but Treasury warrants.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes and warrants are approved. Okay, official business. Now, we're continuation from last meeting concerning the Planning Board request for County to acquire Clay Street for future pedestrian and/or vehicle connection to area roads as outlined in Condition Five of the Clay Street subdivision approval, and this was continued from the past. Please.
Good evening. Joseph Totten, Vice Chair of Nantucket Planning Board. So this is just a final paperwork of a 2016 agreement for easement conveyance. So in July 23, we approve this, so we would like you to take no action, and we will determine the usage, which would probably be like a multi-use path or something simple, so, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your recommendation?
Just, just the approval of this, sorry.
Yes, okay, sorry. Thank you. I forgot something tonight, so I may be a little slow. Okay? There were some questions before about all the conditions being met.
As far as I know, everything's all set. There's a couple little, minor little details, but otherwise, everything's been approved. The staff will be verifying everything.
Okay, then we'd asked Vicky to do some research for us on bicycle or pedestrian easement, whether that would count as a road. Vicky?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. So, yes, I reviewed the statutes and case law that has been decided as far as determinations for whether this, a bike path or sidewalks are deemed to be streets, and I find that they are not. The statutes in Massachusetts general laws specifically state that they are usually constructed alongside or within the boundaries of a roadway, but are not in fact the roadway itself, and the same with sidewalks. So any kind of, you know, the Board would be able to consider whether they want to make those improvements at a later date.
Okay, so there's issues we can we can send a letter and request for a fee tile. We can do nothing. We can do other easements. Comments from the Board? Oh. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, if I may be recognized, Arthur Gasparo. I spoke at the last meeting, and I certainly appreciate the input and research by Council, but I think that the detail to be considered here is whether you're gonna do a fee-taking and of Clay Street that's gonna result in essentially a floating piece of a public road and then connecting to another easement. And I think if you're gonna proceed with this, that what would be better, or in, more in line with, I think, the discussion that I heard last time, would be that you're simply acquiring an easement over both Clay Street and the area shown as the potential of future easement, and it's not actually accepting of the fee. I can't think of another case or area in the town where you have essentially a floating public road between other private roads. And so if you're gonna do the easement, that it would be for bike path purposes and not for the roadway purposes. Also, I was hoping that, and I thought that this was part of the discussion, that Council was gonna opine on whether or not how the lot would be impacted by Chapter 139, Section 33L with respect to a gift, or really an acquisition or a gift rendering a property non-conforming. So in other words, would this create two buildable lots undersized in this district on both sides of the easement, regardless of whether it's, you know, a roadway or not? So I think that it's important to get these details figured out, and if you're going to do this, I think that it also would be preferable to have that letter as a draft for you to look at before you vote to send a letter that seems to have, you know, what is it exactly? Is it a, you're asking them to give you? They've met the requirements, I believe, of the subdivision approval. This doesn't have to happen. It could happen anytime in the future. I did hear, it does seem that you may be in a direction that you want to proceed with this, but if you are, I think that it's important to understand the ramifications as a result of Chapter 139, and that the, that the easement at this time should be specific to an easement for both the Clay Street layout and that section of that's shown on that, that plan. Really, it's just that kind of highlighting that you have in your packet that's in yellow. So I hope you'd get that information prior to voting on this and really have a clear understanding of what it is that we're, you're asking that property owner to give you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, my question was along the lines of, are we committing ourselves to doing this if we do this tonight? When I read some of the words, page 23, it sort of sounded like we were saying we would do a road, and I, you know, and is that, are we required to, and in what timeframe?
Go ahead.
Leslie Snell for the Planning Board, and I see that Vicky Marsh has her hand up as well. But tonight, the request from the Planning Board is only that you submit a letter to the owner requesting that they make this offer as outlined in the Planning Board decision. It's not getting into how the easement's going to be used, which Vicky Marsh put in her legal opinion that you can decide that in the future, which in that case, it wouldn't. Which in that case, it wouldn't uh, trigger the bylaw section that Mr. Gasparo referenced. That would um, divide the lot into two. It would keep the lot as a single lot with an easement running through it. And the easement, as Vicki said in her opinion, can be decided at a future time. So I, I think, you know, going too far down the road of what's going to happen in the future is a discussion for later. And tonight, the discussion is, do you want to request the owner to make the dedication offer to you or not? And then other details can be decided at a later time.
Vicki?
So I, I'd like to also point out, um, and I concur with um, what Leslie had um, said to you. By just merely making this request for them to dedicate this, uh, to donate this land to the town um, uh, or the county, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to um, use this as a roadway. Um, first of all, to do it as a roadway, you would have to actually go and follow the layout procedures for establishing the roadway there. Um, it wouldn't just necessarily, just by accepting um, this particular um, property um, create the roadway. So that's, that's one thing I wanted to point out. The other thing is, um, the conditions in the uh, planning board decision. Um, this particular condition expires on December sixth. And if the uh, planning, if the county decides at this time that they do not wish to act, that um, that uh, requirement um, for um, uh, or the opportunity, I should say, to be able to acquire uh, the property um, would um, go away. And so at a later date, if the town or county finds itself in a position where it want, wanted to create some kind of bike path or pedestrian access on that area, you would have to go and go to the owner and acquire this property. Um, and um, you know, and, and they're not obligated to do it because that um, obligation is contained within this condition. Um, so I, I think that, you know, you may want to just consider um, how you want to proceed as far as uh, reserving your rights to be able to acquire this property and then at a later date. Um, decide what you're going to do depending upon the circumstances that arise in that particular area. And the other thing is, it's not um, requiring any payment on the part of the county to acquire this property. So at a later date, if you have to go back and seek the um, opportunity to be able to purchase a property. Um, it's, you know, it's going to be probably at an unknown value. So um, the county, you know, may want to consider all of these factors. But the, but I just wish to point out that this condition will expire.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah. Here's the, what, what, here's number five is what I was concerned about, and I'm more confused now after I asked the question than I was before. At any time prior to the expiration of the seventh anniversary of the date of the planning board's action, which was sixteen, so we were seven years. The applicant, its successors or assigns shall upon receipt of written request of the town, submit a written offer of dedication gift to the county, town and Intucket of the fee simple ownership interest in the right-of-way portion of Clay Street for the public's use, operation and maintenance thereof as a public road. And two, an easement in favor of the county, town and Intucket of the potential future roadway easement area running north from the northern returnees of the Clay Street right-of-way and terminating at the existing southern property lines of Dave Kim Lane and Dave, twenty R Dave Kim Lane. Properties for the town's use, operation, maintenance thereof as a portion of a public way. All legal instruments accomplishing the intent of the foregoing condition shall be in a form mutually acceptable to the applicant or its successors and assigns the board of selectmen of the town and Intucket and town council. No additional compensation shall be due from the applicant or its successors or assigns to town and Intucket or vice versa in the event that Clay Street is offered, dedicated, conveyed, or otherwise acquired for the public benefit. So there's a couple things in there that I, I thought I heard differently. One was that we'll have to pay later. This is saying, if we accept this, we don't have to pay at all. I thought that's what we were saying, but we just heard that we have to. That's what I, I didn't hear that. I heard that right.
We don't accept it.
So we don't, if we don't accept it, we have to pay.
We will, if we need it later, if we don't accept it now and we need it later, we would have to acquire it, is how I interpreted what Vicki said.
All right, good. So we, so we don't have to pay anything.
It's, yes.
Now with the shells in here, it's saying that we shall use it and as a public road to operate in maintenance. Does that require us to, that's why I want to make sure that we're not signing on to doing something, because I philosophically, I think we should connect all the roads out there. But I think that we aren't like, that we are not ready to connect to the roads that are there now. I think we would make a huge mess if we connected anytime soon. And especially to Skyline Drive, which is not ready. And so I, I think, I'm worried that we're gonna, I just want to make sure we aren't going to get pushed into a situation. We are, okay.
And you know, the funding properties as well, they would all have people with roads. So that's not going to happen right now. That's way down the road. So.
Yes.
And Matt, if I may, um, uh, the in order to be able to create the roadway, we would have to have a layout of the roadway and which require public hearings, et cetera. So I, I think that under the circumstances, this, this doesn't necessarily have to um, be decided at this time. Um, and if you decide to change your purpose and create bike paths, for instance, um, you could certainly do so. Um, you know, when, when you're either doing um, a, a layout for a bike path.
Comments from the board?
I, I'm comfortable with this. I think that it's a, we should never turn down an opportunity to have access to property at zero expense for the town. Uh, it feels like it doesn't obligate us to do anything now, and there's a robust public hearing process before anything would be done anyway. So I, I'm in favor of this and would move approval.
Don, Tom?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I think the, the key is none of us want anything really done with it right now. And I had to think a lot about it and talked a lot to Vicki to make sure that in fact, you know, except this land, we still can wait to decide what we do with it. And I'm hearing that from everybody.
Yeah, and I
Who understands this better than I do?
No, no, um, no action. Sorry, apologies, that was not clear. But that's basically what we're trying to do is let's secure the lot and then we can determine something later on at future date.
Right. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated by Brooke? Say aye.
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 Aye. So we have the land, but we'll decide what to do with it later. Who drafts the letter?
Could the planning board, planning staff draft the letter? Yep.
Thank you. Right, uh, again. More real estate business here. So the next two items are related. Uh, my understanding is in the past, we didn't have this type of action to take, but uh, the land court has changed some of their proceedings, so now we have to deal with it. So first, we have requests for approval. And execution of assent to amend complaint to recognize nineteen seventy nine fee taking of Brunel Street. An approval registration of subdivision plan of lot three is shown on land court plan number three, seven, two, seven, one, dash, A into lots twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. On pending land court plan three, seven, two, seven, one, dash, E for fifty-two Brunel Street. Any comments, Vicki?
Um, I, I could just add that um, this, as you had said, the land court has um, decided that they have request, required that when there's a subdivision plan that abuts um, a uh, road that has been taken by the town or the county, that they um, requested and sent by the town or the county to the taking. Um, Andrew Vorse um, has reviewed the plans and he found that um, they were in alignment. So there is no differentiation between the subdivision plans lying along um, Brunel Street and that of the layout plan. Um, and in reviewing the ascent, I found that it was in order as well. So uh, therefore, I could recommend that um, this meets the requirements and that um, you could vote to execute um, the uh, ascent on behalf of the county.
Uh, questions from the board, comments?
I would make a motion.
We have a motion.
That we approve and execute the ascent.
We have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving uh, the execution of scent for fifty-two Brunel Streets, say aye.
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 Chairman says aye, asked carried unanimously. And we have another, a similar one for approval and execution of assent to complain to recognize the taking of Darmore Road and approval and registration of subdivision plan lot ten is shown in the land court plan for lots one forty-seven, one forty-eight, one forty-nine. The pending land court plan one, three, one, nine, nine, dash, three, five, or seventy-eight Cliff Road. Any comments from the board or Vicki? Same thing, right?
Similarly, it's the same uh, process and I, we have reviewed the plans and the ascent and they are in order for your consideration.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Move approval?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the approval and execution of assent to the complaint relating to seventy-eight Cliff Road, say aye.
Aye.
Chairman says aye, that is approved. Do we have any comments from my fellow commissioners? Harry, Harry, none?
I was just going to say the only thing since the NP and EDC falls under the county commissioners and I'm the representative for that. There was a good, a good discussion about the NP and EDC membership that was really productive on Monday night.
Are we going to come back to the board and talk about someone? About that?
Um, I think, I think so, once the NP and EDC comes to some conclusions.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The commission is adjourned, and we can go back to the select board.
Okay, we will reconvene the November twenty ninth select board meeting. Um, were there any final select board announcements or comments? Um, I don't believe there's any follow-up from prior select board meetings. Uh, this is the public comment portion of our agenda. This is for items that are otherwise not on our agenda for discussion. And uh, all um, topics are limited to three minutes.
Chair and select board, thank you. I just want to thank publicly the pub, the public, all the commuters and everything with the construction we have going on over at Source Network. It has actually gone quite smoothly, even in the morning for the schools. It hasn't been as backed up as we've seen it in the past. Um, this is one of the bigger pieces that we have to do. We're connecting the two force mains together. We cut out a big section of the active force main today. Um, to make those connections. We're moving along on schedule. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that roadway reopened up here in the timeframe that we asked for. Our next step, we're going to be moving over towards Atlantic Avenue and downtown, some of our more congested and real sensitive areas with trees and everything else like that. And I'm sure everyone's getting construction weary or tired, but I just really have to thank everybody, all the staff, the people, the, the public. It's been so far, so good, so. But thank you.
Thank you, David, Erica.
I just want to piggyback on that. Um, I wanted to thank the school superintendent for uh, communicating with the parents of all the school um, kids about the closure and also to let everybody know that once um, well, actually now, RBO is days only now, so no more night work.
Yes, correct.
So um, there'll be daytime detours going on.
Again, I can't thank the public enough. It's really been, they've been great, so. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, I don't believe that there's any new business. Uh, approval of minutes, warrants and pending contracts? We want to take the um, minutes and warrants first and then see if anyone has questions on pending contracts?
Yeah, I have some questions. Jericho's going to talk about some stuff, so. Uh, so move approval of minutes, uh, payroll and treasury warrants?
Second.
All those in favor?
I, I just have to abstain from the thirteenth. I wasn't here, but I approve the others.
Okay. Um, that carries unanimously, except for the one extension. Um, and then uh, moving on to pending contracts.
Madam Chair, I, I had asked that the Director of Human Services come tonight so he could walk us through um, the contracts that are related to the additional funding we authorized for human services.
That's great. Um, Jericho?
Hi, how's everyone doing tonight?
Good evening.
Am I coming through okay on audio?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so yes, we have five uh, human services grants for the youth behavioral health grant process. Um, the process began um, almost immediately after you guys approved the money in spring. We held a variety of focus groups with providers, tried to work out a um, set of criteria for applications that would be acceptable to everyone. Um, and get some uh, new and novel programming together with an emphasis on collaboration. Uh, so we built in a collaborative rubric to the, uh, well, we added a collaborative column to the rubric for uh, grant applications. Um, we then drafted an RFP over the summer and um, then released it uh, at the very end of summer. We've collected, um, I think we had a total of uh, ten applications for that funding, um, five of which were approved, and you can see from the contract list what the recommendations for each were. Um, we then followed the regular procedure um, for the contract review committee where we um, reviewed all of the RFPs, assigned different organizations for follow-up questions to different members of the committee, um, conducted some presentations and question and answer, and then went through the uh, discussions for the actual distribution of a hundred and seventy-five K and which recommendations to which organizations. That's sort of the general overview. Were there uh, some specific points you wanted me to go into further depth on or?
Further questions, questions on that?
Jericho, I'm really interested in the equine therapy program, and I understand that, that I wanted the community to understand how that's going to work because it, I believe it's taking place off island.
It is, it is an off. Yeah, so there, um, there are students that are um, referred through on island collaborative partners. But then as a transportation um, portion of the grant, um, I believe there were a variety of potential sites on the island, but given the time constraints around the one-time grant, um, the existing facility for horses for mental health was selected, which I believe is in East Chatham. Let me check my notes to get that exactly right. Um, so students would be selected here, um, referred through a variety of partners outlined in the RFP. Um, and then, uh, sorry, out of their RFP response. Uh, and then they would be um, picked up at the boat through um, onsite volunteers. They would then have, I believe we settled on, um, there were two bids on that with two different um, encounter packages, and I believe this is settled on a one uh, large uh, event for a couple of different groups of people. But they were not fully funded, so they might have to adjust their RFP from, uh, adjust their um, programming from what it was outlined in the RFP.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Forget the additional information on that. Are there any other questions on pending contracts? Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Um, and I, I just realized I was supposed to actually move real estate matters forward. So if it's okay with everyone, we'll take that prior to citizen departmental requests. Um, it's, we have a request for approval and execution of a license agreement with fourteen Easy Street. And I'll, I'll go to Vicki on this, Vicki Marsh, or Stephen Cohen, whoever.
Um, good evening. Good evening, um, Madam Chair. Um, this matter was originally before the uh, board some time ago. And um, at the meeting, it was uh, just noticed that on the plan, there is an additional sixty-two foot license area um, that um, should have been included in the original license, but was not. So we have um, drafted a new license that would include the sixty-two feet, um, sixty-two square feet of um, sidewalk space that could be used um, for public uh, pedestrian use. Um, and the reason for this license was because there was a chapter ninety-one license granted by the state on this property. And um, in order to be able to comply, they needed to have a certain amount of square footage um, that could be used for either open space or public purposes. And um, as you may recall, And um, as you may recall, the original easements and licenses that were granted were, there was some sidewalk space um on Easy Street, and then there was also a um pedestrian uh walkway that was also granted. So this is just an additional sixty-two feet, square feet um of sidewalk use on South Water Street.
Stephen, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, Vicki said it right, I mean, I would just say it's not additional, it was originally shown on the plan and we discussed it at the meeting, but it was not um noted in the document correctly, so this is, I think, housekeeping to make the document reflect the plan and the discussion at the meeting. Um, so I don't, it's not, it's not adding, it's correcting, but other than that, what you said is all right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any board, further board questions or comments or a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Um, and thank you, Vicki, we wanted to be able to get you out of here um for the night, but um Citizen Departmental Committee requests and reports, uh, Valley Park America, twenty-twenty-three Summer Valley Service update.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, just living their life of a glamorous parking guy in a parking lot right now. Um, so just a update on the season. Uh, great season down at Candle Street. Um, it was our best season yet as far as for parking cars, we were up ten percent from the previous year and had a total of seven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine cars uh for the season. I would contribute that somewhat to the weather, uh, the rain does help us a little bit. Um, little rainy this season. And um also the fact that we were able to get commitments from National Grid early, so that allowed us to have a lot of our clients that might search for parking elsewhere for the season uh know that we were gonna be open and be ready to go. Um, as far as the bag check for the season goes, um, we had our second highest season for bag check with one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five bags. Um, and so that was another good season. Um, this year, we also had our two individual highest days for cars parked um at Broad Street on August fourth and August fifth of a hundred and forty-six and a hundred and fifty-six cars. And a big part of that is just the way the cars turn over. Um, now that's always a busy weekend anyways, but just um to get to those numbers, we just need the cars to to actually turn over. Um, other than that, really um on the season, I just wanna thank Greg and his entire administrative team and I spoke to Stephen Holgate already uh at the end of this season from National Grid and he told me that there's a couple projects next year that he might need a little bit of space, but he doesn't see why they wouldn't be able to work with us next year, so I don't know where the board is on um working with um working with National Grid to try to secure uh that agreement again for next year.
Any questions from the board? Hopefully, we can keep it going next year. Greg?
I'm not needed, Tim, Tim does all the work for me. Um, we've already uh put in the request with National Grid to remind everybody how it works, is their annual agreements and as Tim just mentioned, if National Grid needs its property such as it did in two thousand nineteen, we don't, we don't get use of the property, so we've already asked, um, there's been no response yet. Um, last year, oh, that's Erica, because last year, it was the smooth persuasive stylings of Erica Mooney who got the early agreement, so maybe she can do that same magic. There you go.
Somebody at National Grid earlier this month, and it looks like it's gonna be a go again, so we just need to formalize it.
Yeah, I've, I've been speaking to the real estate guy and we're just hoping, this time last year, we already had it, so, I mean, maybe we get a little, a month or so, but we're hoping. If they didn't have the questions.
Okay, great.
Great.
It's become an important service for the community, so hopefully we can continue to make it work.
Tim and Jim do a great job. Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, absolutely, one other thing to note. Um, I know the chief is retiring. Last year, they um, the police department had needed our cameras about to investigate something and we had taken them down at the end of the season. I just wanted to note that uh we left those cameras up and operational, um, so they are recording. Um, and so if the police should need to use that video, then they can certainly get ahold of me to um to get access to that, and then um, the Secret Service had asked and the police had asked to borrow our fencing from National Grid this year with the president coming. And um, we were, we uh let them borrow that fencing and happy to, if they need, they need that fencing for any other projects, they can certainly borrow it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'm just going to move on to Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee Quarterly Report. Good evening, Leah Hill, the Coastal Resilience Coordinator. Um, I'll just wait for the presentation to go. There, great. Um, so this is the third quarter report from July to September of twenty-twenty-three. Next slide. Okay. A couple highlights, um, Peter Brace became the new chair, Dr. Sarah Boyce became the new vice chair, Doug Rose became the new secretary, and CRAC produced recommendations to you all regarding coastal resilience districts. It was the fourth year in a row that CRAC and Acclimate um proclaimed that September was Climate Change Awareness Month and CRAC started to work on a high priority one dash one, which is outreach on property owner resilience best practices, which which is within the coastal resilience plan. Next slide. So I gave um two presentations about some applications, the first is Coast Snap and this is a community shoreline monitoring app for the community to track how the coast changes over time. Um, Woods Holstein Grant is going to donate a post for us, so basically, it's a post that has a cradle. You put your phone in the cradle and you snap a picture and then it gets uploaded to the MyCoast app, and this is a way for the community to really get involved to monitor um shoreline changing, you know, erosion, et cetera, and it creates a time lapse video of the specific shoreline. There's also um data that you can get from those pictures to be able to quantify the volumes of sand that are getting shifted around, so hopefully in the next month or so, that post will get put out at the end of Hummock Pond Road, kind of facing Cisco Beach to monitor that um area. The second app is called MyCoast and it's a coastal community monitoring program, again, that's used by a couple of different states. In Massachusetts, we use it through the Coastal Zone Management and MIMA. So when there's different, you know, flooding scenarios and storms, um, Vince and I use it to be able to document through pictures and different tabulations the flooding that's going down, um, going around town and um different erosion and all of that, and MIMA uses those photos and those reports to be able to you know, determine if, if we need funding for um different flooding that's happening and damages. Next slide. The next one is I gave uh an update about the coastal resilience plan, the forty recommendations and the statuses of all of them. And it's important to note that in about two years, more than half of the, those recommendations are either in development underway or complete. And to date, there's no structural projects underway yet, but we did receive a coastal zone management grant to start doing a thirty percent design of the first structural project, which is the downtown neighborhood flood barrier, the first phase, so really the Easy Street area between Steamboat Wharf and Straight Wharf, so that's really exciting. Next slide. We had a presentation by Emily Goldstein Murphy, who's a research ecologist for the Nantucket Land Bank, and they, along with the sewer department, applied for a SNAP grant, I'm not sure if they've received feedback from that yet or not, um, but the grant was to really enhance um uh Lily Street, the Lily Pond area, and to address the invasive species, increase watershed um capacity so that it can remove sus- suspended solids, nitrogen, phosphorus, all of that stuff um from the stormwater before it gets released into the harbor. Next slide. I won't really go into this with too much detail, because you all know about it. Um, CRAC discussed the coastal resilience districts and came up with recommendations to give you all, um, which is, you know, underway with creating the bylaw and home rule petition. Next. September was Climate Change Awareness Month for Nantucket and again, it was the fourth year in a row, there were a lot of educational activities that were going on throughout the month from different nonprofit organizations on island. We had the first climate change summit on island and I helped lead a kayak tour all related to coastal resilience um with RJ Turcot from the Nantucket Land and Water Council and from Guth, and with Guthrie from the Nantucket Land Bank, so we took citizens from basically the marsh um and brought them all the way to Petro Landing and described, you know, different issues and structures that were there, um, and they all really loved it and enjoyed it. Next. We had um Florencia and Haley from the Communication Office come and give us a presentation and discussion about how CRAC can start to implement that high priority one dash one community outreach on property owner resilience best practices. So from there, we've created a timeline of different posts that will be posted to the Natural Resources social media, their Instagram and their Facebook every Thursday, and those topics range from, you know, the coastal resilience plan to projects, to coastal risks and hazards that we face on the island. So it's just one outlet to get the word out and educate the community about what's going on. Um, and Florencia and Haley have been really great um helping us through that. Next. CRAC also developed survey questions for different area associations and homeowner associations and that survey has been sent to the Civic League, who will then send it to their membership. Um, and so it's really just to gain some insight about if property owners are doing measure, resilience measures on their property, and if they're not, what sort of information can we help them to guide them? Next. We also had Jeff Carlson, the Director of the Natural Resources Department, come on and just kind of discuss the process for getting projects funded. And um, there are two coastal resilience recommendations that have been put in for capital request. The first one is the purpose road raising and bridge conversion at Folgers Marsh. And then the second one is creating a stra- strategic retreat and relocation plan for the island. Next. So this is the last slide, um, some recommendations and requests from CRAC is to hire a dedicated grant writer or writers to increase the amount of money allocated in Article Ten for coastal resilience projects and to support the two CRP recommendations and for capital request. So I'm happy to um answer any questions and if there's any current or upcoming issues which the select board would like CRAC's advice on.
Curtis Barnes, um, this is very important and I'm just curious, are you doing anything to integrate this with the schools? I think our young people need to be involved as the program grows, and I hope you're coordinating or providing classes or information to the schools as part of your effort.
Yeah, we um, we do go in the schools and we're open to, you know, any teachers that wanna reach out to us. We have different lesson plans that we can teach the students about erosion and flooding and, you know, what they can do. Um, and then we have also talked about reaching out to Veritas, the school newspaper, to see if some of the information that we're putting on our social media, if we can do like a coastal resilience section within their newspaper.
Well, i- in that line, is school administration involved or is it just individual teaching?
Um, it depends on the school, sometimes individual, like the new school, they'll reach out, the teachers will reach out, so.
I would recommend that we encourage more of that if we can, thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Any other questions, Matt?
To comment, I think the grant writer is, uh, if we can find one, is really uh critical at this point. The uh state administration yesterday announced a resilient coast initiative that came out yesterday and they've asked the feds for like seventy-three million dollars. And so they're, and they're putting a, uh, sort of putting a focus on the things that we're already, you know, sort of doing and pretty far ahead on, and so if they release any money, it would be great for us to have an ability to write and get that and be first in line on a lot of it, so. Just for us to think about, I think there is gonna be a advantage, we were one of the first towns to accept CPC and that helped us immensely. It would be great to be front of the line on some of these things because we have such a big need, so, thank you.
Yes.
I, I found it interesting when uh the article in the paper about that announcement from um the governor's office cited a town that has fifteen miles of coastline, and I thought, hmm. Okay. Uh, we get a little more than that, so. Anyway, it is, this is really important, we really appreciate, CRAC has done amazing work in a very short period of time, really great progress, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, um, actually Libby, Vince and I met with the Director of CZM a few weeks ago about resilient coast. Um, and that we were the first town that they reached out to, to, to hear, so that was exciting and we'll be continuing the conversation with them as well. Excellent, thanks, Sam. Hmm? Oh. Amy Kehoe? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you and can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I don't seem to know how to make myself not, uh, I mean, go on video, so I'll just I'll just go as is, okay, okay, thanks. My name is Amy Ford Kohane, my husband and I own and live at seventy-six Union Street and I'm so appreciative uh um to have the opportunity to just get something on your radar, kind of that dovetails with Leah's presentation. We're direct abutters to the Mariner Way Development. As you all most likely know, Mariner Way runs between Union Street and Washington Street Extension. The properties in this area are adjacent to fragile wetlands, the harbor and the Goose Pond. We're in a flood zone, in fact, our neighborhood is identified in the CRP as being at imminent risk of coastal flooding by two thousand thirty, something we're already really experiencing and we have rampant pictures of, of flooding uh in our neighborhood. We've been working feverishly since April with a coalition of ten abutting neighbors to oppose the pools that have been proposed at two, four and six Mariner Way. As you know, the cumulative impacts of such intense development will have a serious consequence for the at-risk wetlands areas nearby, thus reducing any ability we might have to increase our resilience when it is so needed. So I'm speaking to you because we believe this issue should be on our radar. We really need your help. More visibility of this aggressive new development plan on lands subject to coastal storm flowage could help the entire community understand the bigger picture of what is going on around Nantucket and the grave implications for the island. From our neighborhood's firsthand knowledge, we realize how critical it is for the town to move as expeditiously as possible to implement two of the top priority recommendations in the CRP, updating the zoning bylaw and update that wetland ordinance and regulations. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this uh kind of on-the-ground experience and to Leah for her presentation.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any, anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Okay. Um, I'm going to move on to public hearings, um, we have a public hearing to determine the tax allocation, um, but it has been requested to be continued to December sixth. Someone would like to make that motion?
Motion to continue the hearing to December sixth?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously, we'll continue that public hearing on December sixth. Um, Town Managers Report.
Thank you. So I have some. Additional follow-up as we are weekly talking about warrant articles for the May seventh, twenty twenty four annual town meeting. And in your packet is an updated outline of articles. And what I'm trying to do at this point is highlight items that I need. Board feedback or direction on. So first off, your meeting on November fifteenth, you had some, we had some discussion about whether or not. We might have anything from the bike and pedestrian advisory committee on e-bikes or e-scooters. So we asked. And the board wanted somebody from that group to be present at your meeting tonight to talk about that. You also had a little bit of discussion about. Whether or not there's potential for a home rule petition to have local regulation over these things. And I'm not really sure if that's been fully vetted out yet, but. Most likely, a home rule petition wouldn't progress too far because we'd have to show we're much different than any other community and. We're, we're not with that particular issue. However, we asked Mike Burns, our transportation planner, to come in and talk about what BPAC, BPAC has been up to with. E-bikes and e-scooters. Mike, are you there?
And BPAC didn't have a quorum the last time I met, so that's part of it too.
Okay.
Thank you, Libby. And Madam Chair, I think there's some material of the minutes of the, the last meeting that we had at BPAC where we. Had a guest from the massbike.org. And they basically told us the, the state of the state law, the state statutes at the. On the regulating the e-bikes. And right now, as you know, based on what we all had to learn. This past spring at town meeting that there is a classification system of e-bikes and. There's been a recent state law passed that was enacted this year, became effective this year. On regulating class one and two e-bikes. And that there is a definition of what class one and two are in state law. Essentially, they're limited to twenty miles an hour. Or less with the pedal assist. However, there's, there is a third class of e-bike. That can go faster than the twenty miles an hour with the other pedal assist. It is capped at twenty eight miles an hour, but under state law, there, there is no definition of class three e-bikes. That can be interpreted as they're being regulated as electric mopeds or something like this. But the. The, the point is that class one and two e-bikes right now are allowed on bike paths within municipalities unless they restrict them. Class three e-bikes, which are the faster, higher performing e-bikes, they are not allowed by state law. On, on paths. And again, going back to earlier this spring, the, the community entertained restricting. All electric mobility devices from paths and that, that did not pass. So the current state law does still govern. These and class one and twos are, are allowed on paths. We did have some discussion at BPAC of what some suggestions for restricting class threes might be. Those went over through at least licensing them, requiring license plates on class three e-bikes. Having age restrictions on the use of a class three e-bikes, very similar to what are done for mopeds. And that's about as far as the discussion really went at the, the committee level. And we are appreciative of Galen Mook, of, of Mass Bike for, for sharing some insights at the, what's, at least what's going on at the state legislature. With this discussion. But as of right now, there's, there's nothing that BPAC has, has recommended. Part of the issue is we haven't had a quorum the last couple of meetings. But also that there is. The, the state restrictions on allowing class one and twos on paths, not allowing them on sidewalks. That's, that is the state law. And again, class threes are restricted from, from, from paths and sidewalks altogether. So. That's, that's really been the, the limit of the discussion to date.
Thank you, Mike, through Madam Chair. I'm curious if it is possible visually to distinguish a class two from a class three e-bike. I mean, in terms of. When I think about regulating, I think about what is the real capacity to enforce a regulation. It sounds like there's already one on the books from the state about class three bikes and, and bike paths. And I, I, I just, I think this is an incredibly challenging topic. I did some research on my own on it and. I just don't know practically speaking. We currently apparently have a bylaw that says bicycles are supposed to be registered. And nobody does that. That I'm aware of. And I just don't know how we would even implement something. I think it's a case of the technology. Moving forward so fast. I just, I'm, I'm sort of. On my own mind, I have a conundrum. I don't know what to do here. And the limits of what the state allows us to do plays into this as well.
Madam Chair, if it's all right, just to address the question of just distinguishing the different classes, there, there, there does need, there is. A requirement that a sticker be on every bike with the classification systems on there. It's, I mean, I, I am a. A class two e-bike owner. I do have a sticker that the manufacturer put that on my, on my bike for that. It's, it's a little difficult. Difficult to see from a distance what the classes are. So maybe there's some work to be done for that. There's probably also some work to be done and we, we have talked with. Other, other folk and with the town's communication staff on really the need to. For public education and market what actually the classification system is. I think there's just a lot of confusion. It, it took me a while to understand what, what the Massachusetts law is governing the classifications of e-bikes because every single state is different. So visitors that come to Nantucket or those who are already on Nantucket and just don't know. Probably benefit by some marketing campaign to kind of distinguish what a class one, two and three e-bike is. Let everyone know that a class three is not allowed on, on paths. So to allow someone with a class three bike to be aware that they are actually not allowed to do that. They may not know that they can't do that. But there's probably additional work that could be done to actually label those a little bit better. So they can be seen for, from a distance and to help with, with enforcement. But there's definitely a lot of marketing. Mass Bike has. Offered to assist with marketing and providing public education on, on this. But there also is a need to define. What a class three actually is. Like I mentioned, there's really no definition in state law just yet. That's being debated right now at the state legislature about what that is and what the restrictions need to be. BPAC definitely had some input on what those could be, but that just hasn't been settled yet.
Yeah, part of the, part of the discussion with at BPAC, part of the discussion of licensing. Is to somehow put something bright or put some way to identify. That one of the, that one of these is a class three. I mean, the only way you get it now is if someone is going. Too fast on the bike path and something happens and they shouldn't have been there. Okay, but that's a little late. You want to be. Sort of getting people ahead of time. And so that was what, one of the discussions because you can't sit and you, you can't sit by the side of the road even and know which is which. They all look the same. So I think that, you know, there is some, there are some things we probably could do. But it's still, you know, it's still a discussion.
I mean, I would like to ask BPAC if, if they could make some recommendations for us about. Marking, requiring markings of some kind that make it more apparent what's a class two and class three. And, you know, my other concern is about. The use of this among children. Even the class twos, you know, these are throttle. Driven devices that don't require pedaling and. You know, kids over, I think currently over age twelve are not required to wear a helmet. And do we want to? At least maybe change the helmet? Bylaw. So that we have an opportunity for education and enforcement when, when. And educate, you know. To just improve, reduce the chance of people being injured if not eliminated. So.
Yep. Mike, do you think that BPAC? Could, could work on some of those ideas?
I, I can bring that with the, the chair and, and discuss. We've, I've already kind of solicited. BPAC members to kind of think of ideas and email me with their ideas that we can discuss at our, our next meeting. Which is, I believe it's December thirteenth in a couple of weeks from now. Just regarding the, the helmet bylaw, it's not, it wasn't ready for this meeting to discuss under warrant articles, but there likely could be a recommendation for. To make a correction to the, the bylaws regarding bike helmets locally and to piggyback that onto some promotional. Campaign to encourage wearing bike helmets that, you know, we've, we've had some discussion with the Chamber of Commerce and. With communications staff and with BPAC on some ideas to promote wearing a helmet. One, the, the bylaw should probably have the proper language in there. So there'd be some work done to correct that, to get the ages. Correct and, you know, what, what age group actually should be required to wear helmets. And get that corrected. But there should also be some promotion and make, make it seem like it's, it's. There's probably a variety of reasons why everyone doesn't wear a helmet. So there's, there's going to be some effort put into, to promoting that, making sure it's a cool thing to do. Making sure that caution be a factor and perhaps the sheriffs. Could be helpful in assisting with distribution of more helmets. And so there could be some kind of other fun campaign that we could do to. Make it. A, a community-wide thing that people want to promote and show that they actually support bike safety and safety in general through. Well, I don't want to get into the details, but a campaign to, to make sure that that's a cool thing to do and not just marginalized and. So we can ensure that all use, bike and pedestrian users, or, or, excuse me, bicyclists or riding bikes and are safe in case something happens.
Thank you, Mike. Campbell Sutton online. Campbell, you're muted. Campbell? Okay, well, we can come back to her. Do you want to? Oh, Campbell, can you hear me?
I'll make a comment while we're waiting. Brooke, Brooke is on, on the right path about the safety issue. And I've attended a fair number of the BPAC and I think. One thing that we don't see here and the public doesn't see is sort of the amount of mayhem that really is out there. It's not. It's hard to track. It's hard to police to track. It's hard for the. The, the hospital to keep, really keep track of it, but it's anecdotal, but there's a lot of things that happen. We've had people. Come in front of us. There was one older gentleman who was riding his bike and two people on e-bikes. This was over by the water tower. They, they were flying up, trying to get back to the boat on time, no helmets on. And they ran into him and he had his elbow just, just completely ruined. And had to, had multiple operations, went around without an elbow for a while till they could do something. There's been stories that are shared with us of those types of things that. You know, that really shine a light on what, that, that this is a major issue in the summer. You know, when you talk to the nurses and the doctors at the hospital, there's at least a person a day. You know, it's all around the island that, you know, bikers and walkers and accidents. It's, and they sometimes are reported. But if it's not a car, it's not reported. So there's certain things that there's all sorts of things that we really. You know, that, that, that you hear one or two of them and you go, oh, that was one or two things. But then you start to put it together. I think there is a lot of, a lot more mayhem and danger out there than maybe the public is aware. And if they were aware of it, I think a lot more people would have helmets on and a lot more people would be more careful if they knew that this was going on. And, and the impact it was having on people. So I think it's, you know, I think it's good for us to do a campaign and. Sort of get, you know, stay on top of some of this. You there yet, Campbell?
No, she, I completely lost her.
All right.
If she ends up coming back on, we can go, go back to it.
Okay, so we'll hear more from BPAC about potential recommendations on markings and helmets. Okay, next. I just wasn't sure on. The item about noise bylaw. We had heard from a couple of community groups, organizations over the summer. About possible changing and I didn't know if the board wanted us to pursue that or not.
Good one, a, one a recommendation.
Yeah, my feeling is if, if members of the community have something that they'd like us to consider, that they should come to. Town administration and make a request. I think. I don't think we, we can. Anticipate what the actual needs are or the, or the requests unless people. Come and ask.
I mean, we, we did recently make some changes, but. I mean, the things that I have heard will, will never. Pass town meeting. Just basically shutting down construction for the entire summer. It's just, it's not, it's not feasible. It's, it's not. Fair to the people who work in the construction industry or to property owners who are trying to get work done. And we, we did shorten the hours, but may, maybe there could be some additional tweaks, but it's got to be something that would. Really be viable. On kind of both, both sides of the issue.
Got it. Okay, I'll, I'll let them know that. Time is moving on and if they don't have anything, they can maybe think about it for next year.
I would say that you'd, you'd have to build some momentum and I don't see how we're going to build some momentum between now and then. And if you open it again, it might just get worse. So I think we're better to leave it where it is now and, you know, sort of. Worry about it in another year if, if need be.
Okay, rental car bylaw changes. We are awaiting some information from town council to address surplus rental vehicle medallions and I don't think we've gotten anything, but. Brian, are you, Brian Riley, I think is, is on here and I think he's working on this. Brian, are you?
Yes, yes, thank you. Yeah, I do anticipate getting you. Some feedback to this question. I'm aiming for the end of this week. In addition, you know, next week we're on to discuss the, the various citizen petition articles and one of those. Is also proposing amendments to the car rental agency bylaw. So that'll dovetail into the discussion as well.
Thank you. Short-term rentals. So you all had some discussion about this last, last two weeks ago. And there are some citizen warrant articles relating to this. And I think you were sort of mulling over whether or not the board should put something forward. And concurrently, an issue came up about the Mass General Law that was accepted at town meeting, which imposes a community impact fee. And Brian has done some additional research on that. So Brian, we did get an email. When was that? Late sometime today. I don't think it, it didn't make it in the packet though.
Yeah, this morning, yeah.
There, there, I think there's some recommendations from, from town council about how to. Address some of this with respect to the questions that arose at your last meeting. So Brian.
Yeah, the, the, so the main issue, and then, you know, I heard sort of consensus on this. With the comments you got from the community as well as, as well as the board members was that. Yeah, this was a. This community impact fee, which doesn't apply to all short-term rentals, but probably a fair number of them. If, if that was to take effect on January one. That it would apply to contracts, you know. The majority of contracts which are already signed for next year at a set price. And now all of a sudden there's this new fee which the. Department of Revenue is going to be looking for. And so it has to look further into. Can we kind of delay the effective date of this community impact fee statute? In my opinion, we can. And the reason for that is that after, after town meeting votes to accept this particular community impact fee statute. A, a form gets filed from the town clerk with the Department of Revenue saying town meeting has accepted this on this date. And either to take effect on a future date or perhaps immediately. And that gets filed with the OR. And that gets filed with D O R and then they start looking for that fee to be collected on any, um, uh, as of the beginning of the next fiscal quarter, that happens at least thirty days after that notice was filed. And so for example, if it got filed today, uh, D O R would say, well, then that's in effect on January one. And the operator, the owners are going to owe us this, uh, impact fee if it applies to you. And that was a problem because again, the vast majority of these contracts are already signed. So my recommendation is to put, because we have not filed that notice with, um, uh, D O R. Uh, we can hold off and at the, at the annual town meeting, uh, just have a warrant article to amend the vote that was taken in November. And put in, uh, an effective date, uh, for that acceptance. But that, that you can do that with this particular kind of, this particular local acceptance law. And so for example, um, if that vote, uh, is taken in May, uh, we file a notice and say, you know, the acceptance date is August first, for example. Then D O R would be on notice of that. The, all the owners would be on notice of that. And, but as far as technically when that fee starts being collected, it would be the, the fiscal quarter after August first, which is October one. So I think that might address the concerns that owners and property managers were having about uh, being responsible for this before that. Uh, this is, if this happens in May, then all those people know, understand what's coming and they can be prepared to assess this community impact fee. Uh, for those that it applies to. So I think that's the best way to address the concerns that we talked about last time.
Yeah, rather than, uh, bring this back to another vote, could we just say that we'd like to send this? You know, that we as a board or we as administration would like to send this to D O R as of, you know, August first, as of September thirtieth. Can we just pick a different date?
I think, um, I, I mean legally, I, I might see if I can talk to somebody at D O R about that. Just as sort of a generic question, but, uh, I mean legally, I think that works. Um, you know, practically is, you know, I think the owners want to have some certainty as to whether they're going to be liable to collect this community impact fee or not. Um, and that's why, that's why I was thinking, you know, just amend the vote to make clarify exactly when it's going to kick in.
My concern is if we amend the vote, what the clarity will be is there'll be an attempt to vote this down. And so, you know, if we can, you know, if we, oh, if we, it will give people another bite at the apple and they'll show up and they'll vote no. And so I think that, you know, this is, if this was voted, then if, you know, can we implement it? Do we as a board want to have it potentially voted down or do we as a board support it and want it implemented?
Okay. Well, let me, yeah, let, let me dig into that a little more and see if I can get any additional information for, uh, for next week's meeting. But, uh, yeah, I, I do understand what you're saying that, uh, you know, could we just hold off on the vote you got in? Or not, not you, vote the town meeting, uh, approved in November and just file it when we sort of picks up at the fiscal quarter of our choosing.
Or, I mean, Brian, could it be done in such a way that an article could be brought forth to town meeting that couldn't rescind the tax? But could clarify it so that it started with say contracts, any contracts written for the twenty twenty-five rental season?
Well, I'm not, uh, I'm, I'm hesitating because I think that D O R is going to say, well, whenever this, you know, whatever fiscal quarter this takes effect in, you know, that's, that's when they're going to start looking for the, collect the fee from any rental payments made after that date. So I'm not sure we can hold it off on that. I mean, that's another thing I could look at. But, um, but you know, another, I guess another thought that I have is if we have an article to, that all it says is to add an effective date to what was voted in the November special town meeting. That, uh, you know, I, I think there's a good argument that somebody who wants to amend that to rescind that whole acceptance. Um, you know, would be beyond the scope and, you know, shouldn't be, shouldn't be effective.
Yeah, that's what.
I'll, I'll think of, I'll, I'll think of both of those things, uh, and get back to you on that.
Okay, Tucker.
Ms. Madam Chair Tucker Holland, uh, just one thing I was going to mention, I mean, Matt's right, you know, something can always change. But I, I believe that this article passed unanimously at this town meeting with roughly eight hundred people in the room.
Yeah, it wasn't called.
Yeah, and I, I would be, I would be inclined to notice the community that we plan to file with the state on this date. And that all contracts, all, all rentals.
Next year.
Not next year. I, I think it should be before that, honestly, because I think the community supported this. I think that there's some grace for this season for contracts that are already in place. But I'm saying, if we say make it a, file it in August to take effect September first or, uh, next fiscal quarter, October. And we noticed the community that that's what we're doing, then there's no more we didn't know, right? Any contract executed between the day we announced we're doing this.
You know, or October to be different to some.
That is a rental starting in October.
That would be fine.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, I would prefer not to go back to town meeting. I think that we just signal that as our intent to file it with the state on whatever date we pick and, and best have your language in any contracts you do between now and then.
Madam Chair, I agree. I think that seems like a good balance instead of waiting to twenty twenty-five that gets through the high season of the summer. But, but gives folks notice at the same time.
And then in the email that Libby sent, there were some good questions about exactly who does this fee apply to? That, that I think, you know, I'm not, you don't need to read them all tonight, but we want to make sure this isn't applying to someone who's, you know, living in their house and rents, you know, short-term, et cetera. I don't think it does, but we want to clarify that when we make these, uh, recommendations, you know.
And then a really robust communications campaign about who this impacts. So that the fear of that, it, you know, is, is dissuaded because that's really not the intention of the, of, I think what was passed.
Yeah, four or five of the people who voted unanimously, Tucker, were calling me the next day, not too happy until I explained it. So, so I think, you know, I think it would change. I think there was a bit like, the, it got past people. So I do think it could be a little different.
Okay, so we'll get more from Brian on that.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, uh, moving on to coastal resiliency districts. We are waiting on a draft of that from Vicky and there's been some email this week about, um, Vicky, Leah Hill and Vince Murphy all meeting with each other to develop a bylaw. And I let them know today that time is kind of moving on here and we need to get at least an outline before the board uh, as well as the parameters of betterment, as has been previously discussed. So that, still, still waiting a bit on that. Uh, year-round housing deed restriction program, um, are, are, are we still waiting on the Affordable Housing Trust for anything? Yeah, okay. So that's, that's still hopefully coming. And then the increased salary compensation for select board members, that's probably still being thought over by you all.
Yeah, I, I have started my analysis project and what I did was I, I went and I found a, a place where I could find a range of communities that have, uh, similar budgets to Nantucket and another range similar populations. And those interestingly have one other community that fits in both categories. So doing comparisons and then finding out what compensation is, um, in those communities. And so I hopefully will have something for the board in the next few weeks on this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I wait for that because I'm not convinced yet that I have information that will convince me to change.
So I, I expect that we will find that if we do this, we are going to be leading the Commonwealth on this matter, not following. So I think, I, I suspect what I'm going to find is, um, there isn't a lot of significant compensation out there. And that we may be, if this proposal is to do something that's quite different, um, and innovative. But I will bring you the information and we can have that conversation.
I would say there's two things. One is we have a group looking at a new form of government perhaps. And we'd like to hear a report from them. And I would like some convincing information that it would, we would have more candidates if we increase the fee.
I don't know where you're going to find that ever.
I don't think I will, but I would, a lot of our justification was we needed more people and younger people, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I would like to be able to justify an increase in fee if I had information that would support that. And I just want to call it more money, more money article. Anyway. That wouldn't help. So I won't call it that, but I gotta have fun with it.
Okay, so to be continued on that. And then next week, we expect to have a review by town council of the citizen warrant articles. And, um, that is intended to be the so-called triage that town council undertakes with the citizen warrant articles, which is determining how legal they are. And there are sort of three levels. Legal can proceed, sort of legal could proceed with some modification and not legal. And Brian Riley, I think you are working on that.
Yes, we're, uh, we're finishing that up this week. And, um, I guess I would suggest there's sort of a fourth category as well, which is folks can vote this, but it has a non-binding effect.
Yep.
One que, just, uh, one thing I think we should look at is, is this a repetitive article? That's been in front of us in the last two years and is it allowed? Is that one of their reviews?
That, as far as a legal restriction on things, that really only applies to zoning bylaws. So that wouldn't be, you know, legal grounds to say, you know, this is improper, you can't vote on it. Unless potentially it's, it falls within that zoning bylaw, uh, exception.
All right. So, so if it's anything can come right back, if anything fails at town meeting, it can come right back, except zoning can't come back for two years.
If they, if they get the number of signatures, I'd say yes.
And Libby, if I ask one more question, you talked about short-term rentals, but then you got sidetracked about would we propose?
Oh, well, at your, at your November fifteenth meeting, I thought I heard a little discussion, ju- just discussion, not really anything definitive as to whether or not the board should, even though there are some citizen warrant articles, whether or not the board should put something forward. So I, we will need to know that at some point.
We need to talk about that. And I really want to propose that our chair can be in these discussions. I think maybe she shouldn't vote, but I think she has expertise we should hear.
Well, I mean, I, I know that I cannot vote on any of those because of, I have.
I would not refrain from your comments. I don't think the board would object to that.
Let me talk about town, just review that with town council.
Madam Chair, I would just say briefly that Allah, Mr. Riley's, Attorney Riley's, um, assessment of the citizen warrant articles, that that would be a, once we get clarity on those warrant articles, then we can take a look and see what whether those are applicable to what we're thinking or whether they're not, or whether we want to do something, I mean, sort of obviously, but.
Okay, um, Campbell Sutton has her hand up again. Maybe we can just try one more time. Campbell.
Okay, I think this will work this time.
Yep.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, sorry, I'm, I, I have a call in the background. I just wanted to say that when I was on a town government study committee, I looked at a lot of different towns' charters. And so to Matt's, uh, question or concern about, uh, duplicating um, citizen warrants. I mean, it takes a charter change, uh, to a degree, I believe, uh, town council could confirm. But there are towns that are, um, have our form of government whereby the articles go for approval or disapproval in front of Blackboard. So I think there is a way to, um, uh, winnow out uh, articles that are redundant, if you will. So I just wanted, I had a couple of other things to say earlier, obviously, but I won't put those in because we've passed that moment. But I did want to just put that out there. So thank you for your time. I'm so glad I got through.
Thank you. And we'll be continuing to review these for a while. So you'll have another shot at the other items.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Real quick, she might be referring, I read something about representative government and how the represent, the select board can then vote for or against. What were the representatives have voted for, which I thought, and I'd never read that before. I read it somewhere today and I thought, so she might be referring to that. Where say, you know, say the representative government voted something, you know, that doesn't make any sense. There was so many days and you could bring it forward and the select board of the town voted. It was kind of interesting, but yeah, it was.
Matt, you representative town meeting forum?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which I thought was interesting. I never really heard that or thought of that. I assumed that what they did is, was a hundred percent, but in some cases it isn't.
We can ask Rep Fernandez, who's a Falmouth Town Meeting member, when he's, when he comes to brief us.
There we go.
I was just remembering that I need to, um, get in touch with him. Um, okay, so the monthly town manager, uh, town management report, just, um, we, we keep playing around with our format for this report. And so we tried to, um, a little bit of a new modification this week. Uh, and again, I, I'm not going to go through everything, every single item, but we kind of are trying to separate these things out into categories. So we have our business as usual category. We've been spending a lot of time on our fiscal twenty-five budget. And as you know, we are giving you a presentation or, um, recommendations on the general fund budget at your meeting on December thirteenth. We had a lengthy cabinet meeting today of, about the expense increase request. We're meeting again next week, later this week, next week, and getting, getting at the finalization of our recommendations. Uh, special town meeting follow-up is still occurring. And we had some of it tonight with the community impact fee, but I still need to get the home rule petition that was approved up to, um, the legislators and a few administrative things like that. Prep for the, obviously for the annual town meeting is starting to ramp up. Uh, strategic plan follow-up. So we, you all, I think have received the report from our facilitator, which reviewed how your retreat went in on October twenty-fourth. And they are now getting the strategic plan update ready and will be bringing that to you shortly for you to just formally adopt. And then we'll begin our planning for im- um, implementation planning. And we had a thought about something which has evolved over through some, a little bit of discussion with some of you and also, um, a manager's conference that Rick and I attended recently. And that is, it's sort of convenient that some towns actually, and we have done this before, you know, in the past, designated a board member to each focus area who works with administration and other staff and, you know, just getting updates and being really sort of owning that focus area and helping further it and move it along and giving support for it. And being able to talk about it at various meetings with, when things need to be updated. So, um, luckily there are five focus areas and five of you. So if you're up for that, maybe we can set out a, a little program to assign everybody the focus area. And then we would have maybe a, a quarterly-ish meeting with you and staff to brief you on what, what is, how the implementation is going. Something, something like that. Uh, the, um, we, we're trying to identify also chain, any changes that might be coming up and how we do things. And we have the additional select board monthly licensing meeting and that, and that is a, a change. And we have the additional select board monthly licensing meeting and that, and that is a a change. Um, that is an additional work assignment for uh our office staff, which includes agenda and packet prep, organization of attendees, posting, technology for the meeting minutes, all of that kind of thing that goes along with a meeting. Strategic plant, strategic and major initiatives, we have the Baxter Road Alternative Access and the S B P F Notice of Intent and the G O two project. Lots of activity has been going on with that the last couple of weeks. And the, I I think we will be, we are working on a memory and of understanding with S B P F, which should be coming to you this month. So it's coming, coming along soon. Sheep Pond Road, that's going to be coming to you at some point as well. That's the kind of a, also an alternative access situation. Our Island Home, we have a a work group underway and we're, we met uh the week before last, I think. And we're organizing some upcoming meetings with the Sherburne Commons Board. Residents of Sherburne Commons, we're having an initial neighborhood meeting and meeting with town departments. So that, that project is starting to ramp up with design and programming. We, as you know, we have the Good Neighbor um Wind Grant Fund that is available to town agencies, departments, boards, committees and commissions. And we're working on outreach to those groups to see what ideas they might have for grant possibilities. And we're getting those centralized, vetted, and eventually those will be coming to you. Long-term solid waste planning, we had a a meeting today. Um Brooke might talk a little bit more about this maybe under select board reports. But we are really ramping up with our R F P and uh other activities to, in preparation for the expiration of the Waste Services Agreement in Nov- in November of twenty twenty-five. And we are working on, we, we're talking today about outreach about this and really ramping up our um information online and elsewhere about how the solid waste function works. And there are a lot of complexities with it. And we're planning a select board workshop in January to um go over it. Employee housing issues, uh uh sorry, uh that category, this category, staffing and personnel management related. We have a lot of employee housing issues. I think I've mentioned this before. We're in the process of finalizing the hiring of the housing director. Uh, our rental property manager is a, is a new position for this fiscal year. We've got a lot of activity going on with leases, locating rental properties, reviewing rental properties, reviewing rental equity issues, possible acquisitions, a lot, very active in that area. Um, also under personnel, we have an employee morale and uh leadership group. But there's actually two separate groups and we've been meeting together lately to talk about a variety of morale and training and employee recognition ideas. We had, I guess I didn't put it on here now that I'm thinking about it. We had our um annual employee appreciation event on November seventeenth, I think it was. Um, very well received, I think. We had, I think, record attendance at it, so that was great. Uh in, in the other category, a number of us, including some of you, have been doing those Mass Municipal Association webinars. I I recently, a lot of us recently did a virtual leadership program, running an effective meeting, the state level disaster and recovery process, effective constituent engagement and Grants One-O-One. And the, these things are really helpful. We had some discussion about it at our fall conference, the Mass Municipal Managers Fall Conference. And everybody is um really happy with how these webinars are um turning out. Well, it seems like you talk about a topic and the next week there's a webinar about it. Speaking of which, the manager's annual fall conference was two weeks ago. Um, it, it was in, the topic was respect and civility. And I will be talking a little bit more about it in the Town Manager E-News, which comes out tomorrow. Um, we covered communications, codes of conduct, public comment, legal and practical realities. We re- reviewed the South Bridge Public Comment case. And it was really um very interesting conference. Washington Street Coastal Resiliency Planning, this is a joint initiative with Land Bank, and we're working out the, how that's going to proceed. It's definitely a phased um initiative. And then real estate issues, just there, we're trying to get a handle on them, but we do have our temporary assistance with Mr. Vorse helping out. And then just lots of meetings. We have, of course, have our, I won't go into all of them, but they're, they're listed there, just, you know, there's lots of them. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I just have three quick comments. Uh, Libby, I think the briefing with the departments per one board member is an excellent idea. I know as a new board member, being, I just went past six months the other day, is that um working and real life and all that stuff, it's difficult. And I've wanted to reach out to, we talked about this when I first got uh on about meeting with department heads and, you know, I would certainly never ask a department head to meet at eight P M or something like that when I actually have time. So I think that's a really good idea. I want to do that anyway. So I, I just, just as um, as an aside, um, I had a couple constituent meetings lately and solid waste comes up a lot. And we've had a couple briefings here and I think that those are great for the public. So I think anything to get that more word out, just, just, so, so people are aware of what's going on. Obviously, Brooks on the committee and 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 um town, town admin and town council, et cetera, put a lot of time and work into that. But I think any, any kind of outreach on that. And then just third, uh, third point would be, it's funny you mentioned the M M A webinars because we have our first meeting of the Town Council Study Committee tomorrow. And coincidentally, there was an M M A webinar on change of government today, um which I think I was, I was on for a little while. And uh some of the, yeah, so it sounds like a lot of us were. So that was funny, timing.
Anything else? Um, are you going to assign us to categories?
Um, if, if you would like, I can put out some suggestions. Uh, they sort of actually naturally kind of come about. Um, but if you're okay with it, I'll send, send out, how about this and, yeah.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any committee reports this evening?
Yeah. I I'll just follow up on the solid waste. Um what we talked about today was how to succinctly describe a very complex operation. And it's uh, it will not be easy to do, but we've got some ideas about using video and some other to really communicate uh with people. What happens when you send something over to Maticat Road? The various things that we all send over there. And really, where do they go? And there is, there's a lot of um uh, community narrative about what they, what people think happens out there at one eighty-eight at Maticat Road. Um, and so really being clear about how that operation works and the different pieces of it and and where different waste streams go. Um, and then really um preparing town meeting for some of the things that they're going to be asked to fund this year related to solid waste and how it fits into that complex puzzle. Um, so communication was a big part of our conversation today. And um, and there it would, there will be, and it is now, we have now the date confirmed on January eleventh at six P M. There will be a comprehensive solid waste um presentation to the community. Um, and that will be both in person and virtual. So uh, mark your calendars, everybody. It's a learn, it's an opportunity to learn what happens to your trash.
And and my, my, A, they have to know what happens, but then they have to understand what the changes are and why they're good. There's a lot of people who feel like we should be going down one path or another and have been on various committees that have proposed different things and have, you know, prior histories of different negotiations, et cetera, that have strong feelings about this. So I really, I think it's not so much what do we do now, in my mind, is what are we planning for the future? And why is this really good? Why should we support it? And I, my experience is, when you understand something really well, you can simplify it. And so I think, you know, and I know you guys do, so that, you know, that has to be, here's why it's really good, you know? And that's what we have to be, uh, you know, feeding the public. That's what they have to be consuming, is why is it good?
Yeah. And and I do want to, I want to give a shout out for the people on that team. We have some really great expertise, both in, in, in town employees and community members um who are contributing to those discussions. And this is a big deal. I mean, this, the, the contract that we're operating under um now was executed, you know, twenty years ago. And uh there have been a lot of lessons learned and and I'd like the community to be fully aware that this group is very aware of where the gaps and and um the unknowns that led to things that have um uh caused consternation in the community, we're very, very much aware of that and con- and very conscientious about tightening it up. And there will be some shifts in roles and responsibilities. The town will be taking back some roles and responsibilities in the interest of transparency and oversight. And being able to explain why the R F P for the new contract, um, why the acquisition of the assets, all of these things make sense in terms of how we're going to manage waste and how we're going to leave room for flexibility and how we manage waste um in the future as circumstances change and technologies come and so forth. So it's really fascinating and I hope everyone comes along for the ride.
Any other committee reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Carrie's unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Did, did we already sign everything?
No, there's some stuff over here.